Tuesday, July the 11th. Please stand for invocation led by Rabbi Steven Silverman, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, members of the Administration, thank you for this opportunity to share a prayerful thought. (Singing) In a matoh, womanahim shevetachim gam yachahad. Behold how beautiful and pleasant it is for sisters and brothers to dwell together. This is one of the many different melodies which we Jews offer during the chant of sacred scriptures, in this case, a phrase from Psalms. And many people know that Psalms originated as sung poetry. It brings to mind music, a symphony. I think of the instruments that comprise an orchestra, a piano made up of black and white keys, and if we played only the black keys or only touched the white keys, we would hear half-music. Violins, bass, cello, guitar, we can only pluck the strings because they are bound to the neck, the body of the instrument. Without the necks and the bodies, half-music. And so too with every instrument that makes up the orchestra, which is Mobile. We need many components to bring forth the beautiful music upon which this sacred teaching is chanted. How beautiful it is for sisters and brothers to dwell together. Creator of all life, continue to bestow the blessing of capably listening upon these devoted servants of the community, members of the City Council, the Administration, the staff, and many more. May they hear the music of the voices of our city, and we all say amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, through the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 11th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type electronic device, please at this time put it on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to that council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed, out of the City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of July 5th.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes passed.
Communications from the Mayor's office.
Good morning. The Mayor's been delayed, but I will turn this over to Shonda, who is going to recognize Employees of the Month from Public Works.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I get my Employee of the Month to come down, please? So this is the acknowledgement of Employees of the Month for Public Works. We have Public Works at Large, Public Services, and Parks and Recreation. The first will be Parks and Recreation, Michael coming down to honor his Employee of the Month.
We are recognizing Kezzy White this morning as the Employee of the Month for Parks and Recreation, and I just wanted to mention that one of the reasons we are here recognizing Kezzy today is because since the beginning of the Employee of the Month program, he has been our representative on the council that nominates and votes for the Employee of the Month. And many of his coworkers have stood before the council to accept this award in no small part because Kezzy has been coaching them and encouraging them and telling them what it takes to be recognized for that, and he has taken that entirely upon himself to be that mentor to his fellow coworkers. Kezzy?
Next, I'm going to bring Jennifer White down to talk about Public Works at Large. This month, the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month is Rodney King. Rodney is employed in the Traffic Engineering Department where he's a traffic tech, too, and he's our primary sign maker. So not only does he make the signs for all the city, he also keeps up with the inventory there. He's also been vital during Mardi Gras. He leads a crew that ensures that all those bear cages are in and out of the road every night during a parade, and he does it with safety in mind for his crew. Rodney is a crew leader who always takes care of his crew, makes sure that they're prepared and ready for whatever the day may bring, and he's an asset to the department and always has a cooperative and happy attitude that he spreads to others. And that is just some of the small reasons why Rodney King is the Public Works at Large Employee of the Month. Dexter, if you can come down.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. The Public Service Maintenance Employee of the Month is Angela Farm Pay May, which is the supervisor one that oversees littering, recycling, and our morning division. She played a great part in getting our staff trained for the next-gen system that we recently implemented. She's a hard worker, you know, she'll help anybody, whether it's her division, other supervisors that need help, she's willing to help anybody, and she's a great asset to our department.
I would like to say every time you see her, she always have a positive attitude, always smiling, even picking up the trash off the street. I mean, her and her crew, she's just always smiling, great personality, and we need more sitting employees just like you. I mean, and thank you for representing the City of Mobile, great, with your great personality.
Let me follow up. That's truly awesome because on Sunday mornings, which y'all don't know, is she and her family pick up everything from Duval Street all the way back down to the property that is Alabama Forest property, I think that's behind Lemon back over there, and along everything behind Church's Chicken. So even her family's working on days that she's not working for the city, helping control litter in her neighborhood and her community. So my hat's off to you.
And next, we're going to have Shad Collins and Marcus Flucker come down to present the Parks and Recreation baseball champion.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, mayors, staff and administration, members of the City Council, and everybody that's here this morning. Mobile being the home of Hall of Famers Hank Aaron, Billy Williams, Willie McCovey, Satchel Paige, and Isaac Smith, as well as New York Mets 1969 World Champion and Mets Hall of Famer Cleon Jones. If you look in the room, I think baseball is in a good spot. We have our MPRD champions as well as Municipal Park All-Stars, so let's give a round of applause to all the young men in here. With that being said, I'm here to give a brief recap and acknowledge all the MPRD champions. This year, we had a great season. We had over 1,300 participants and 59 teams, 59 baseball teams. We also had three softball girls softball teams with 45 participants, so let's give us a round of applause for that because we got the girl softball going. So our first champion was the five-year Metro Park team, are they here? The second champion is our six-year King Park, please come forward. That's Coach Michael McCovey, Reginald Parker, and Harold Justin Jr. Y'all come on up front so everybody can give you a round of applause. Let's give them some credit, y'all. Our next champions are our eight-year High Point, the eight-year High Point team, y'all That's Coach Detrick White, Coach Otis Burden, and Coach Clarence Sheridan. Our next champions are the 10-year High Point Blue Team, come forward. That's Coach Michael Mordred, Coach Tim Scott, and Coach Tywin Gates. And before we move forward, we would like, we have a special acknowledgement. We have the 10-year team for Aaron Park, and let me give you, it's a brief story behind it. They actually won the championship on a technical forfeit, but the coaches, they said they did not want to accept the championship without earning it, so they moved forward, so they played the next team and end up losing. But I think that was honorable of them, for them to show the kids that you don't want to get nothing without earning it. So let's, they're not here, but let's give them a round of applause for that. A great man once showed me, he said, "What is a loss? A loss is only an opportunity for you to create a better version of yourself." So that's all a loss is, is an opportunity for you to create a better version of yourself. So that's all a loss is, is a chance to learn. So the champion for the 10-year was the High Point Blue, I don't remember the rest of them. Okay. The next one is the 12-year High Point Team, y'all come forward. So the last champions we have is the 12-year Duval Girls Team, and they're not here. So these are all the champions for MPRD, let's give them a round of applause.
And we'd like to say to the young boys and young ladies, congratulations on behalf of the Mobile City Council, and keep on making us proud. Thank y'all so much.
to recognize, and Shad mentioned these young men who were sitting behind me as well. So on behalf of the Mobile City Council and the entire City of Mobile, I want to extend congratulations to the seven-under All-Star Baseball Team for winning the Dixie Youth State Championship. Yeah, come on down. I just want to read a little bit about you because your skill, your talent, your good sportsmanship, your perseverance have made that victory possible. And we all believe that it's really, very, very important to recognize how youth sports plays a role in the community and in children, in communities, to help them learn the importance of leadership. So each of you have demonstrated all of these qualities, so on behalf of the City Council, the City of Mobile, and the Mayor of Mobile, we want to congratulate you all, and if y'all will kind of scoot down a little bit, we'll get a picture with y'all, and I've got your certificates. This is Coach Lee, does, okay, let me try not to mess it up too badly, D's Wankowski? Wankowski, the D is silent. Lee is a coach for these Municipal All-Stars, and we are just so proud of them and proud of you all, and I know there are a lot of parents here, y'all stand up too because we need to recognize the parents and family members. I see some are still taking videos. Thank you so much, and we have certificates of recognition for each of our players, and we're just so proud. Thank you for doing this, and thank you to all the coaches and families for supporting what they do on the field. So we're going to run out and take a picture as well, and these are certificates for you. We'll be right back.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave-of-the-noise ordinance on August the 4th on Moffett Road, August the 26th in Mardi Gras Park, July 22nd on Airport Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passed.
Public hearings. Today is the public, today is the public hearing to declare the structure at 10:05 Texas Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to come and address the council on this item? You may come down to the podium by stating your name and address at this time. Is anyone present on this particular item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Cassie Sowa.
Morning.
I stand for you today to address a pressing concern that demands our immediate attention, dogs and pet cruelty, particularly the issue of chaining or improper tethering. Our city prides itself on being compassionate and caring, not just towards our fellow human beings, but towards all living creatures. However, the sad reality is that many innocent animals suffer in our community due to neglect and mistreatment. Chaining or improper tethering dogs is not only inhumane, but it also poses significant risks to their physical and mental well-being. It can lead to severe injuries. Dogs can become entangled in their chains, resulting in painful wounds, cuts, even strangulation. They can also suffer from extreme weather conditions. Like much of July, there was a heat advisory because the temperature was over 100 for most of the week. It is our responsibility as a compassionate society to protect those innocent beings from such cruelty. Therefore, I urge this council to take swift action in addressing this issue. Three people in my neighborhood had dogs chained to trees, but by buying proper housing, I was able to get three of the five off chains. One neighbor insisted on keeping two of his dogs chained up. He said he was doing nothing wrong, and his people have kept dogs on chains for up to 50 years, and they were fine. The dog's chain was cutting off the air, and I couldn't get the chain off. I called Animal Control, and they said I would be arrested if the homeowner saw me on his property, not the guy killing his dog. Mobile County needs to start fining people, make it illegal, use the money from the fines to help better the animal shelter we have. The people here believe because they have been doing it for so long, it's okay, but a lot has changed in the last 50 years. It's time to change this as well. First, we must strengthen our existing animal welfare laws and regulations to prohibit the chaining of improper tethering of dogs. By clearly defining and enforcing these restrictions, we can ensure that no pet is subject to a life of suffering and neglect. Secondly, we must invest in education and outreach programs that raise awareness about responsible pet ownership. By providing information and resources to our community, we can empower pet owners to understand the importance of humane treatment, proper care, and alternatives to chaining or improper tethering.
Thank you so much for coming down and addressing the council. My question is, the incident that you're speaking of, did that happen in the city limits of Mobile or Mobile County?
Mobile County.
Mobile County?
Yes, sir.
Because we, inside the city limits, we do have laws on the books, but we just don't govern outside of the city limits and everything. So, but we do have laws on the books in the City of Mobile. Yes, ma'am?
They just said Mobile County as a whole.
I'm sorry, I can verify.
Sorry, they said that Mobile County as a whole, there's no laws on it?
Yeah, you need to go to the county commission.
The county commission?
Yeah, Mobile County Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bill Boswell, and I reside at 1609 Government Street in the Flocler neighborhood of the Linekoff Historic District. I'd like to speak to you today on the importance of historic preservation and the part you play as the deciders who sit on the ARB and the MHDC, something that you will be taking up very soon. I want to begin by saying that we, the Historic Districts, are pleased with the ARB nominations made by the mayor and support their appointment. I'd like to extend our gratitude to the mayor, if you would please chief, and Ricardo, extend that to the mayor from us. I am hopeful that the changes to the process as outlined by Councilman Carroll in the pre-council meeting this morning will be implemented. I would add that there needs to be a more transparent process involving the historic neighborhood organizations, as outlined in the ordinance, in particular that the new MHDC that you will be appointing consult directly with the historic neighborhood organizations on the ARB nominations going forward. I just firmly believe that the neighborhoods need to be consulted more directly than was done in this previous process. This was not, was not done completely this time, but fortunately, the names presented were all well-qualified. The process of choosing the ARB and the MHDC must involve the Historic Districts, as the ARB and the MHDC affect our daily lives and are in effect our homeowners' association. Our voices and concerns must be heard. We must be heard as the Historic Districts are under assault on a daily basis by developers and property owners who care little for the historic preservation, as is the case with the current Conti Street House travesty. These houses cannot be allowed to be moved regardless of the power and the privilege of those who are currently attempting to do so. I hope the new ARB will stand with the Historic Districts and prevent these historic homes from being taken from the protection of their current location to make way for a parking lot. This is something that we cannot abide, and it is your responsibility, even though you will no longer be the area where we, the body we can go to for appeals, it is, I believe firmly, your responsibility to make sure that the ARB follows its rules and guidelines going forward. So I ask you for your support in protecting the Historic Districts and the structures within those districts going forward. Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President?
Carroll.
I have to take this, this opportunity. Billy, I'm awesome. For those of us that know Billy, awesome. You know, on this council, I don't know if there's anybody else that does restoration of old houses that have fallen down or have fallen on the ground. I do. I don't know if there's anyone else that builds replicas because we do. I don't even know if there was a stronger advocate for historic, historic preservation in the city on the council other than myself, so I am deeply engorged in those neighborhoods. I actually live in a Historic District. I appreciate you stating that you, and the, the community that you talk to is okay with the appointments recommended by the Mayor's Office. I think that they are good. I do have some questions, but I think we can resolve those over the next week and get through what we need to do. But when it comes down to the Conti houses, and I think everybody on the councils have heard me say this, even though we can't advocate one way or the other, is that everyone involved must follow the letter of the law, everyone. And if we follow the letter of the law, I think that we'll have an outcome that everybody can live with. So I appreciate you coming down today, and as always, man, wow, man, awesome. Thank you for coming today.
I like to surprise you every once in a while, councilman.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate you coming down.
Thomas Mitchell.
I didn't see him.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And I'm not sure why the first speaker didn't have a name given. I thought the new rule said we didn't have to do the address, but who knows? This stuff may change from week to week. Nonetheless, greetings, my name is Reggie Hill. I'll answer that because I need to talk about Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code, Abuse of Power, Public Safety. Let's just start with the, the Chapter 38. Send that to committee, that 38-030. This infringes upon our U.S. constitutional rights. Keep in mind, law requires an annual report from the Mobile Municipal Court. We have not received that since 2009. Also, keep in mind... Also, keep in mind, there are, uh, judges who are finding citizens guilty for laws that do not exist. So if we're gonna do anything with chapter thirty-eight, which has been cried before this body for years, we need to send this to committee before we start doing any of it, or it's gonna result in legal recourse. We're gonna skip around a little bit, let's go to public safety. Uh, ARP, when will funds be allocated or even a budget be presented? Okay? Um, body cameras, when will this body, uh, I would say, press upon our state delegations to ensure that we do have the release of that footage? It's totally necessary, we pay for the cameras. Why is it not public access? Uh, performance contract, have there been any evaluation metrics put in place to show whether or not all of these millions of dollars that we've been giving for years has actually benefited public safety in the city of Mobile? What is it gonna take for people who actually have data-proven initiatives that will actually alleviate these issues and concerns we're facing to be a part of that same pool? Police sensitivity training. This is something that needs to do with law citations because you can't get to a judge finding somebody guilty for a law that doesn't exist when the police are the ones issuing the citation, they don't know the laws either. As well, cultural awareness. It might not be privy to a lot of you, uh, but for some of us, we, we, it's prone for us to run. That's just the culture. Police was founded to keep people enslaved. Let's look at this abuse of power. The fundamental use of the city seal and the letterhead. These last letters that were sent out, they used the language, but didn't mention thirty-nine dash nine-two or thirty-nine dash a hundred. We know what's going on. Reinstate those that are suspended. It's an embarrassment for those who look like us to abruptly, um, adjourn a meeting and still get paid. Lab peoples was not on the agenda last week. The city already voted on an agreement. The school board has not formally considered anything. Thank you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Reynolds, for making that aware this morning. Nonetheless, when you wanna pull a stunt like that, when you're holding the field hostage, that's when you do that. When you say, "We're not gonna get this field repaired unless you go through this lease agreement," that's when you shut it down and say, "We're not gonna vote on anything else until you look out for us." This is not the way to conduct business. There will be legal matters going forth. I know we're not gonna get the mandate extended and I've done my best to keep the tone down, but as long as we keep acting like this, you all, do not be surprised.
Teresa Bettis?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Teresa Bettis. The address is six oh two Bella Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one zero. Good morning, Ms. President, and the rest of the council, the mayor's staff. I am here in regards to the recent discussions regarding public housing and affordable housing here in Mobile. Many of you know me as the Executive Director for the Center for Fair Housing, which I've been there for more than twenty years now and have seen the pattern of housing here in Mobile. While I greatly appreciate, uh, the update from the Mobile Housing Authority and their recent progress, um, I was really, uh, deeply concerned about the comments made about the city yielding to neighborhoods' opposition to affordable housing being built. Um, oftentimes, that type of opposition is deemed to be called NIMBYism. Some of you may be aware with that. I think Gina may be the only one that was on the council many years ago when I had to come and speak, uh, regarding development of affordable housing by Alpine Hills on Ziegler Boulevard. And the term NIP, you weren't here? Okay, well then all, all of you missed that. But I came to speak at that time because HUD was threatening to pull the city's funding, their, their CDPG funding that they get because the community was in an uproar about having affordable housing built near where they live. And so, of course, that housing development did go forward. It was, uh, put forth by the Mobile Housing Board at that time. But however, uh, many times when we see types of housing that would benefit individuals who are disabled or homeless, or those of us who don't have the same eco, uh, socio-economic, uh, dollars in our pockets, there is oftentimes opposition. But the city does have a duty to affirmatively further, uh, fair housing, which includes in, which includes addressing the need for affordable housing for your residents. It is clear that, uh, by the numbers presented by Mr. Pierce, that there's definitely a need. I would like to urge the council in the city to move forward with developing a plan by working with my organization and many others. We know what the needs are and we desperately need to address that. Also, we would like an update on the twenty-nine million dollars of opera funds designated for affordable housing. And I was wondering if anyone has an update on that here this morning that can tell us how and when those dollars plan to be spent as of time is of the essence, and they must be spent by twenty twenty-six. Thank you for your transparency and your, uh, concern on this issue.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Bettis. I would like to, uh, ask the chief, do you have anyone that's present that can answer some, uh, one of two of those concerns Ms. Bettis had this morning?
So we can probably get that to the council, get that information to the council and you can push it out as, as you, as you wish, um, or we can, uh, we can look to, uh, present to you all at a time of, of your choosing. So either way, it's up, up to you all. I mean, we've, we've obligated our, our funds, so we're, we're not in any jeopardy, um, with the timing.
Okay. Well, I ask you if you could send that to us. And Ms. Bettis, make sure that, uh, get a clerk and I'll make sure that you get the copy.
Thank you so much.
Another question from the, concern from the council, Ms. Gregory?
No, well, um, Ms. Bettis is here and you did mention the, um, housing development that was built off Ziegler, uh, next door to Alpine Hills. While I am the longest-serving member, I was not serving back then, but I can tell you because I live near where this development is, it is a very nice development, uh, very well-maintained, taken care of, and so it has been a positive impact on the community. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bettis.
James Jackson regarding Resolution twenty-one seven twenty-seven. Twenty-one seventh and twenty-seven.
Uh, good morning, everyone. James Jackson, Jr., CEO of J forty-five Empire. I'm here to talk about Benvile Square and the funding for it. Uh, I think it's, uh, to me and a lot of people in the city, I think it's not a top priority. So I'm here to encourage you to vote not to fund Benvile Square. I think it's fine the way it is. The top priority in our city is housing. We have a housing crisis. We have people in RV and Birdsville that's about to get put out their homes because the airport has bought the property. Uh, I think that three, four, and two million should go into fair housing. That's just my opinion and the opinion of a lot of citizens in the city. So let's get these people out of Port Vickers and put them at home. Thank you for your time, y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Now, clerk?
Ordinance is held over thirty-eight zero thirty, ordinance to amend chapter thirty-eight Mobile City Code Municipal Court.
So move.
Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, I, I'd like to ask, uh, Michael Linder, the council attorney, to expand on, uh, what exactly is being done here so that there's, uh, clarity as to, uh, payment and, and how those things are handled with, uh, our court system.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Uh, first, uh, and I don't know if Ricardo has anything to add to this at any point, but it's my understanding that these amendments were requested by the municipal court bench, and they are largely technical and are meant to bring them into line with state law, particularly as regards the, uh, appearance bond being five hundred versus a thousand dollars, but also the, uh, the section thirty-eight thirteen, working out a judgment. There's an error in the code as it's currently constituted that actually, in substance, makes that section say that the only people not eligible to work off judgments or fines or costs in municipal court are the indigent. In other words, the only people that that really benefits, as it's written, can't benefit from it, so this is a technical amendment intended to address that. And there are, as, as far as I understand, there are no larger issues with this other than bringing the bond amount into line with state law and correcting a manifest error in the ordinance.
Does that go towards ten dollars a day or ten dollars an hour?
Uh, yeah, the ordinance says that they shall be credited not less than ten dollars a day, which again comes from state law. My understanding is the universal practice with the municipal judges is that they are crediting people with ten dollars an hour for public service.
Right. So we're simply making sure that they're compensated correctly for their time?
That is correct, and that's a responsibility the city bench takes upon itself.
Thank you.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Eighty-eight zero thirty-one, ordinance for a lease agreement between the City of Mobile and the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County for certain property not now needed for public or municipal purposes.
So move. Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Congratulations to Williamson High School right here. This is the lease for your new football stadium.
Resolutions held over. Zero eight seven twenty-two, approved purchase order to the University of South Alabama for EMT certification class. Zero eight seven twenty-three, seven twenty-four, and seven twenty-five, approving purchase orders to Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems for LED streetlight luminaries and traffic signal controller cabinets. Zero eight seven twenty-six, approved purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for decorative streetlight poles. Twenty-one seven twenty-seven, authorized contract with J Payne Organizations LLC for fountain and site amenities improvements at Benvile Square. Sixty-seven twenty-eight, authorized settlement agreement and release of claims.
So move. Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-four zero thirty-two.
Motion to table.
Second? And promptly move in second and in discussion?
Do we have to take it up and then have the motion to table?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Oh, I thought she did, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Move, move to waive the rules to, for immediate consideration of ordinance sixty-four dash zero three two.
Second?
Promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived?
Sixty-four zero thirty-two, rezone property at the north side of Government Street, east of South Anne Street from B one and B two to B two.
Motion to table.
Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Consent resolution is being introduced twenty-seven seven twenty-nine through twenty-seven seven fifty-nine.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read with the exception of two resolutions.
Oh, no, we're gonna go ahead and take them up. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry.
Um, zero three dash seven four two and five eight dash seven four four.
Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, clerk?
Twenty-seven seven twenty-nine, designate election offices for the July twenty-fifth District Six Special Municipal Election and possible runoff on August twenty-second. Sixty-seven thirty, seven thirty-one, seven thirty-two, seven thirty-three, and seven thirty-four, determine appropriations to Gulf Coast Ethnic and Heritage Jazz Festival Productions, opportunity for entertainers and performing, performing arts. P.L. Wilson Detach- detachment of the Marine Corps League Incorporated and Project Thrive Foundation serve a public purpose and approving payment. Sixty-seven forty-five, approve award a special bonus to the employee of the, to the Public Services Employee of the Month. Sixty-seven forty-six, approve award a special bonus to Parks and Recreation Department Employee of the Month. Sixty-seven forty-seven, seven forty-eight, determine appropriations to opportunity for entertainers and performing arts. And the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama, Inc. serve a public purpose and approving payment. Twenty-seven seven fifty-nine, authorize contract with Makaya Beck for services as an election specialist for the District Six Special Municipal Election.
So move. Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Seventy, I'm sorry, forty, seven forty-three, declare the structure at ten oh five Texas Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion layover two weeks.
Second? And promptly move in second and in discussion?
Uh, Mr. President?
Which one is this?
That's one oh five.
Forty-seven forty-three, Texas Street.
Uh, I've learned in between council and pre-council that there may be a buyer for this property. Uh, I was just sent a message earlier, I wanna look into that beforehand. Uh, if I find out between now and next week that we don't have a buyer, I may ask that this come back before two weeks. So right now, motion layover two weeks, please.
Second?
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll layover two weeks.
CFP resolutions being introduced twenty-one seven forty-nine through zero eight seven fifty-three.
Per council rules, these will layover for one week.
Resolutions being introduced zero one seven thirty-five through zero one seven sixty.
Per council rules, these will also layover for one week.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to, um-
We gotta table the law.
Yeah. Go back, we need to-
With the exception of forty-seven dash seven four zero.
We're gonna take it up.
We'll take it up.
That we need to take up.
Is that a motion to take it up?
Yes.
Second?
Promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, clerk?
Forty-seven seven forty, assent to the vacation of a portion of an alley adjacent to twenty-four eleven Wil- Wilson Avenue.
Move to table.
Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't table.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one seven fifty-five, call for public hearing to rezone property located on the north side of Government Street, one hundred and forty feet east of South Anne Street, from B one and B two to B two, scheduled August fifteenth. Forty-one seven fifty-six, call for public hearing to rezone property located on the southwest corner of Monday Street and Saint Meter Street, extending to the northwest corner, Hercules Street and Monday Street, from R two to R three, scheduled August fifteenth. Forty-one seven fifty-seven, call for public hearing to consider the application of the Friends of the African American Heritage Trail, Inc. to operate a shuttle service scheduled for July twenty-fourth. And forty-one seven fifty-eight, call for public hearing to assent to the vacation of a portion of an alley adjacent to twenty-four eleven Wilson Avenue, scheduled August fifteenth.
So move.
Second?
And promptly move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um... A week from today, residents of, of police jurisdictions, certain residents of the police jurisdiction, who are currently enjoying City of Mobile Police and Fire Protection, will have an opportunity to join the City of Mobile through the annexation process. I certainly hope all of them will do that. Uh, subsequent to that vote, I think it would be, uh, appropriate for the city council to again consider whether it makes sense for the city to continue to provide police and fire protection in the areas of police jurisdiction that do not annex into the city. Uh, as I pointed out several years ago, uh... The Police and Fire Department, uh, the Police and Fire Services we provide to those residents are paid for by the citizens of the City of Mobile. Uh, the people in the police jurisdiction, uh, the businesses there charge half the sales tax that the, that, that city gets from businesses operating within the city limits, and there's certain, uh, ad valorem tax benefits. Uh, the bottom line is that the folks in the police jurisdiction that are receiving these services are paying ha- less than half the tax that the citizens of Mobile provide these services. I think, I think after the, uh, annexation election, again, we need to look at. In addition, I would point out that over the last, uh, eight years or so, there have been a number of bills, uh, initiated in the Alabama Legislature, which would either do away with police jurisdictions, in which case the city would cease providing police and fire in the police jurisdiction, or would, uh, pull those services back, change the way police jurisdictions are administered. This is part of a larger effort, really nationwide, to do away with police jurisdictions. But I, as I said, I think after this, uh, vote that occurs next week, it would be good for the city- it would be good for the city council to, uh, study this issue again. Uh, one of the things we discovered, uh, when we went through this process last time was that, uh, pulling back police and fire, uh, Mobile, City of Mobile provided police and fire in the police jurisdiction is a complicated process. Uh, the proposal I put before, uh, the city council the last time this came up, uh, was, was to be phased in over two years, is my recollection. But I think we need to look at what will the revenues and expenses be, uh, in the remaining police jurisdiction? Uh, what would the revenues and expenses be if we rolled back from three miles to one and a half miles? You, everybody, I think, knows that the police jurisdiction extends three miles past the city limits. One of the ideas is to pull back from the outer band, the outer one and a half miles. Uh, or we could pull back from all three miles of that area where they have not annexed in. Again, what would be the revenues and expenses if we pulled all the way back? And, and how do we help the people that are in, uh, the police jurisdiction transition to a fire district if we decide to pull back? Um, so there are a lot of issues to be looked at. I, I would not, the, the circumstances that existed when we last took up this issue are different than the circumstances that would exist today or after the referendum, uh, when we take up this issue. Uh, and one of the primary changes is that certain, uh, residents of the police jurisdiction will have had the opportunity to join the City of Mobile and pay their fair share of the provision of those police and fire services. So again, I, after the, after the referendum next week, I would hope we could, uh, look into this matter more fully. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Dave, District One, Councilman Dan.
No announcements.
Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Committee will meet next Tuesday immediately following the city council meeting to address proposed rule changes. Thank you.
Uh, District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I didn't know if there was anything specifically you wanted me to talk about today. But, um, uh, we are, uh, in the process of scheduling our mid-year, or I should say midterm, um, meetings with our constituency base and traveling throughout District Two again. Uh, the list will go up, uh, the third week in August, on which date that will be throughout the district. Uh, I want to schedule five meetings, uh, as we go through this. Uh, was hoping to, uh, get this up immediately, uh, after Election Day, but it may be before the election of the, uh, District Six. Uh, Joe, uh, Councilman Joe just threw me for a loop listening to him with this, uh, police jurisdiction, uh, uh, announcement and what possibly may happen out in the police jurisdiction. As we all know, uh, right now in the PJ, there's roughly seventy thousand people in which we serve. We have forty officers out there constantly, uh, plus fire protection in areas. And I think our expenditures, according to the last report, were thirty-five billion if you take into consideration the courts and the jail. So with a pro-rata share pulled back, we're looking at about twenty-one million dollars in possible savings if that were to happen. If you, without adding back the possible twenty-six thousand people, that was a lot to think about real quick as he made that announcement. Uh, much less to think about what could happen to the individuals that live in the area that are already enjoying, uh, the police and fire protection and also the, uh, the medical response that we have from the city. So that was quite a lot to think about, uh, Joe, Councilman, uh, uh, Dave's at the end of the meeting here. So, uh, I'd encourage all the council to consider that as we move forward too, 'cause it just came out of, uh, left field at me just right there.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to follow up on what Councilman Carroll and, and Dave's mentioned about the police jurisdiction, um, and the vote that is coming up July eighteenth on a possible annexation, there are some areas of the annexation area, uh, proposed area, that, uh, if approved, would, um, come into District Seven. And so I am certainly hopeful that the people who live in those areas would, uh, vote in favor of that. I would love to see them come into District Seven and be their representative and begin holding some meetings to get better acquainted with them and to go over the issues that have come up. I have been in those areas and have listened to a lot of the people, and so we are already getting very familiar with what they would like to see done if, in fact, those areas do vote in favor of coming into the city. So I urge everyone to please go vote on the eighteenth. And again, I would love to see you all be citizens of the City of Mobile. And speaking of citizens, uh, and community, uh, there is a newly re-established, uh, Country Club Village Civics Association that I've been working with, and they will be holding a first cleanup day on Saturday. So I'll be out there with them. They are doing some, um, improvements to the park area, some cleaning up, some painting, landscaping, those kinds of things. And so I'm really looking forward to working with them more and making improvements in their area. Also, coming up, um, in Hillsdale, we have a couple of events. The Youth Violence Prevention Program will be in Hillsdale on the seventeenth. And Opportunity for Entertainers, Dirty Dan and crew, will be there on the nineteenth. And I look forward to being a part of those programs and seeing all of those youngsters who come out to get a lot of great information and see some wonderful role models in, in both of these, in, uh, the Youth Violence Prevention, as well as Kalinsky Adams and his team who come out every year and put on these programs for our youngsters. So, so thank you for that. And before we get out of here today, uh, Ms. Lambert, if you would, uh, remind us of our upcoming meetings because there are some changes.
Our regular scheduled meeting for, um, July twenty-fifth is now moved to Monday, July twenty-fourth, same time. Um, pre-meeting at nine o'clock and regular meeting at ten thirty.
And then we got the one. Okay. Aren't we changing one to Wednesday?
No. Oh, we, we're gonna hold it on Monday.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and to the citizens of District Three. Uh, greetings, um, this evening, uh, six thirty, uh, PM. Uh, the Riverside, uh, Community Action Group will be having their monthly meeting, um, at the, uh, first precinct, um, DIP, inviting all the citizens along, DIP. Please come out this evening. Again, that meeting will take place this evening at six thirty PM. And I plan on being present at that meeting. And also, there will be some guest speakers also. On, uh, we know that this is the middle of, uh, July, and, and Baptist School is, is rounding the corner. And, uh, we, it's time for us to get ready for our Baptist School rally, our annual Baptist School rally, which will be held on the twenty-third of this month, Sunday, July the twenty-third, on four to six o'clock PM. It will be held at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center. And this week, I will be listening and, um, listening, uh, to all of the sponsors and, uh, and also the volunteers who will be participating. Again, this event will take place on Sunday, uh, July the twenty-third, from four PM to six o'clock PM at the Pleasant Valley Shopping Center, which is located on the corner of Pleasant Valley Road and also Government Boulevard, which is also known as Highway Ninety. Uh, I'd like to, uh, ask the, uh, chief of staff, uh, you know, between, between now, July first, and really now, I've been receiving a lot of, uh, text messages, phone calls, Facebook messages, et cetera, about fireworks. Uh, many people think that the, uh, city council had just, you know, forced the fireworks laws, um, upon the citizens of Mobile, not knowing that it really was never no laws. But of course, things just kept on coming up over and over and over is about the, uh, shot spotters. Uh, with all the fireworks that was going off through the Fourth of July weekend, did that interfere with the, uh, shot spotters in any kind of way?
It did not. The system itself is designed to be able to screen out fireworks versus gunfire and, um, and, uh, exactly how that technology, so it goes to an analyst before it actually comes to the PD for action. And so it's confirmed to be a gunfire at that point.
So there was no type of false alarms or anything?
No, sir. It will detect them, but, but it goes through a screening process to make sure it's, uh, there's a certain signature that a fire alarm makes because of the projectile. And then, so we, they are able to distinguish from just a firecracker going off versus a handgun being fired in a projectile exit.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
And promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Means adjourn.